We'll move into our monthly department reports, starting with Code.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some of the highlights from the report. There's a lot of information in there, but highlights are basically total calls, about 1,200. We had utility inspections of 126, code inspections of 34, 31 permits written for about $2,000 worth of revenue, and we addressed 19 citizen complaints in that month. If you have any other questions about what's rest is contained in the report, if you'll just let me know, I'll try and answer them.
Okay. Any questions for Factions? Thank you. Next is Electric and Pelican.
Thank you, Mayor. I was... Finally, sold a little power last month, a little over 13 million kilowatt hours, a little over $900,000 in cost. Had about average amount of work orders for the month. One of the items of interest I want to talk to you about was ECG update. ECG has named a new interim from Fort Valley, Ned Watson. He is going to lead the search for a new... They have done some partnering with McLean Engineering, which I think will even lower our cost further. So everything seems to be going well with ECG now. Glad to be able to say that. And I'll take any questions that you have.
Any questions for Brian? Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance Department.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to give everybody an update on the transition between Rista and Surebill. The staff says everything's going fine, and we've sent out the first bills and delinquent notices, and things seem to be going well. The website, the new website is up and running, and I think Steve has worked with Jess Brown, and they've done a really good job getting everything changed over, still trying to get some of the kinks out, and I'm sure if you'll just let him know, he'll try to address any of your concerns or questions, and we'll try to get things changed. But they've done a really good job with that. We're still working on the... We've got those figures in, and we'll be talking about that at one of our later meetings, and hope to set the rate early in September. And then on the performance measure, just a few things to point out. We granted 452 extensions during the month, and then with the clinic utilization, we're at 95 percent, which is excellent considering this time last year, we had a capacity of 88, and now this month, we had a capacity of 176. So we've kept that utilization up. One other thing to report is we handled our Bravo appeals within the clinic, and we had 15 appeals, and 14 of which passed. We had five that passed on their LDL, which is the cholesterol rating, three that passed with their BMI, which would be their weight, two blood pressure, three tobacco, and one spouse tobacco. So we're... Proud of those results, and the fact that, you know, the employees are making an effort, and they got those points back. And then you also have your financial status report, and I've gone into a good bit of detail there. I won't try to point out everything. One thing, though, on the last page with the splash, in 2007, we've got a balance of around $200,000 in that bond money, and then once that's gone, we'll go into spending the new splash money for paving. And I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Renee? Okay. Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had one, or I guess I had my first house fire, and that was an experience, and I learned a lot. Had 691 medical emergency EMT or med assist calls, and one thing I've learned is... In the fire world, that's becoming more and more a part of their mission, or is becoming the biggest part of their mission. The six public relation events, 473 hours. If there's anything in particular that you see in the report you'd like to ask me about, I'd be glad to. Try to answer that question. Or any questions?
Any questions on fire?
Cost of service, 3,668. Cost of PD, 1,673. 373 in court, 304 training hours. The community service guy picked up 300 pounds of trash and got 80 more tires. You can see the community events. If you've got any questions about PD other than what you've got, you can tell me, and I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Chief. Solid Waste.
Thank you, Mayor. Solid Waste report is pretty consistent from previous months. For the dad's concern, we did pick up 147 scrap tires, kind of went up again, and we issued eight semi-tender permits. Can I ask a question?
Any questions on solid waste? Streets and Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the admin side, we rented out the community building four times. Our guys in fleet maintenance continue to work on the fleet of the city as it comes in. Grounds crew is throughout, working throughout our various locations throughout the city. They maintain, and they picked up almost a half a ton, or 880-something pounds of litter throughout the city. Our street division was covered up this time period through the torrential downpours that we experienced, but we did do some, make some headway toward the inspection, being in compliance fairly out of the airport. Our sign and markings division, Steve Laveney, performed his monthly inspections and repairs, and actually today, point of notice was he was in partnership with utilities and... Some new traffic signals at Church Street and South Madison Avenue. He's also hung some of Daniel and Breedlove, and they are new type light that's going to be a lot more visible than more dangerous types of lighting. It's a new LED light that we got at no cost from the DOT, so we're proud to have those up. Building maintenance guys continue to go through and work off of work orders, and they're doing a great job. Points of interest currently, we... Are preparing to pave a section of East Maryville Street schedules Monday and Tuesday of next week. Let's go, we'll knock that out right before school starts, and that'll be pretty good. And our sidewalk stuff will start being installed after that. We've been, the rains have kind of hurt us when it comes down as far as digging in ground and not being able to compaction on saturated soil. So anything other than that, I'd be glad to take questions on.
Do we have the trains operating in Monroe any at all now?
No, ma'am. You mean the one that comes down toward, parallels Madison?
Uh huh. Well, why do we still have those stop signs there at the tracks? Maybe I'm the only one who stops.
Like on Vine? Like on mirrors? Where are you?
Walker Drive. Is it Walker or was it one of Vine?
All the places I know, they've been removed. When you turn to go to Davis, right there before you get to the South Madison, those have been removed. Yeah, I know the Universal Runways.
No, not down that far, but the one, like I said, parallel to Madison.
Can you look at that?
As long as the train's not, as long as Subcircle, Great Subcircle Train Company's never coming back down through there, and they said there wasn't two that...
Yeah, we can look at getting those removed.
I know there's one right there at Universal Runways. Was it Universal Runways?
Universal Runways.
And I, there was a citizen that got stopped not too long ago for running it.
Want to coordinate with Public Works and look at those.
A suggestion would be to call Trail Road before we engage in that, because we never built for any government. So probably is okay, but let's call out the...
I agree. We need something right with them saying they're not going to be, because they'll pull it, and then the train comes down there, well, it'll be issue.
Before we do that, we just want to coordinate with the rail road.
Any other questions? Thank you. Water Sewer?
Gas. Everything's pretty much consistent with the past several months, except for the wastewater treatment. Notice that number's up a little bit due to the amount of rain we got month of June. Sewer system pretty much got flushed out. We had some pretty tough days there. The 2011 grant's going good. Had a few little hiccups with one of the subcontractors, but that's been taken care of, and it's moving on. Just one other thing I want to make you aware of. We just finished up our business residential leak survey on our gas, and we came back with 51 leaks. So we'll be coming to you in the next several months with some main replacements, and we hired a new contractor this year, and we don't know if the old contractor just didn't do as good of a job, or if our system's actually deteriorating that quick, but this was the business district and... So we'll see our guys out. Probably see a lot of patches in the road here in the next several weeks, so sure I might have a lot of patching to do. That's all I got.
Is any immediate danger from any of those leaks?
No, no. They're all pretty small. I've got Victory and Atherton Streets going out to have their main replaced, and Young, Cedar, over off of Church Street. We'll do all those in-house, though. We'll do them ourselves. That's all I got.
How's the sewer line replacement coming down on Walker Drive? Douglas and all that area?
Yeah, that's our grant job. Walker Drive's been pipe bursted. The truck main from Walker Drive to South Side's been completed, and a section of Fabro... They started tying over the new services today. We had to run the pipe bursting crew off. Well, I say we did. We had a meeting with Reeves, contractor that had the contract on the job, and he chose to remove them. So they got new guys coming in next week to get started. We had several issues. One, he flooded a house, that type stuff, so had a couple of issues we had to deal with, but it's going good.
Just on that. Rodney, we should find out fairly soon if we receive the...
Hopefully this week.
This week on the 2013 CDB grant, so keep your fingers crossed.
And the streets will be, after you're finished, they will be put back in?
Yes. In fact, I guess we're going to put a whole new sidewalk on Walker Drive, right?
Because I know walkers do.
Yeah, we gotta turn out so much of the sidewalk, because that's where the main is, so they can... We're just going to put a whole new sidewalk down through there. It's going good.
Okay. That concludes our department reports. Moving to committee information. Finance.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several items on the agenda this evening. The first is update on our committee meeting on July the 8th. Ms. President.
Thank you. We had a committee meeting on July the 8th and had a conference call with our Bravo folks, Bravo Wellness folks, and the committee has decided to test the spouses this year. What's still to be decided is when we will actually roll those points into, if we'll give the spouses a year to comply, or if we'll go ahead and implement that in the spring, but hopefully we can decide that in the next few meetings, maybe talk about it a little bit more on the 17th, and... We're still waiting to get some reports from Bravo to see what their projections would be, and, you know, how it would filter down to the employees as far as their withholding. So that's what we discussed at that meeting.
Second item is approval of the group health plan amendment.
We've got a plan amendment from Covenant that they are recommending that we do and make it retro to the first of the plan... Here, it's where we now require somebody that already has family coverage to add a newborn within a certain period of time, and they're saying that they've already got family coverage. We shouldn't be adding this extra stipulation on there, so we just need that to be recommended to be passed.
Chairman, I move that we recommend that to the full council for approval.
Have a motion second, all in favor of that? Okay, we'll recommend that to the full... Three is approval of Bravo Wellness agreement.
This agreement, we've sent the agreement to the attorneys for their approval, but it's basically what we did last year, it's just so we can move forward with the testing, just like we did last year in November, and that's basically what this agreement's for.
Okay, members of the committee, have a motion.
I'm over. I'll go ahead.
Have a motion second, all in favor of that? opposed, motion carries, we'll pass that on to the full council for their approval. Item four is approval of purchase of handheld units.
This is for our Itron meter readers. They go out and, of course, read the meters, and we've had this as part of the GIFA project, but with the federal funding taken, as long as it's taken, we just need to get permission to make this purchase, to get it ordered, and we'd still like to pay for it from GIFA funds, but if for whatever reason it drags out to where we're needing to get these ordered before the software agreement runs out, we would need to purchase it out of operating funds, but hopefully we'll be able to purchase it with the federal GIFA funds, but we'd just like to go ahead and get permission to purchase this unit, or these units.
This purchase approved earlier, but the financing is the only issue, is that correct?
Yeah, and Rodney might can address this a little bit more, but the GIFA funds are federal funds, and there's just so many hoops you have to jump through with environmental review and some advertising, and we're afraid that, and originally we thought that the software support would end in October, and so we put this on the... Agenda, and just yesterday, Beth got notice that they have extended that, but she, I don't think she's quite gotten the assurances that if we wait till after that, it would still be covered if one of the units broke down or whatever, but we just, since it was on the agenda, felt like we'd just get your permission to go ahead and purchase it, and hopefully we'll be able to use these federal funds from GIFA, but if not, we'll have to purchase it from the operating or take it out of CIP, which is ultimately...
And did you want to explain why we needed to make this purchase?
Why? Well, if we don't, and our machines go down, we don't read meters.
I guess that's what I was...
Right. I mean, like I said, that's what they read their meters with, and otherwise, we'd go back to doing it all by hand, writing it down on a piece of paper. Yeah. They're about six or seven years old. We have them on a rotating basis where we send them in, have them rebuilt or serviced, and so we do have a spare, but they do generally need to be replaced every five or six years.
We purchased our meters from HD Supply as well.
We do.
So the only thing you can buy is HD Supply readers? Is that how they do it?
They're Itron, and it has to, yeah.
They are the rep for, they're the rep for Itron in the state of Georgia.
Yeah. We're pretty much bound to it.
Yeah.
Let's hear, make a motion that we present there to the council for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor of that? Okay, we'll pass that on to the full council for approval. And the last item in the discussion, approval of out-of-state travel.
Thank you. This is for two of us to attend the annual conference. It's our software provider for utility billing, finance. We're in the process of switching over to their tax system, so they pretty much have all of our software, and we attend their conference annually, and... Typically, it's in South Carolina where they're located, and therefore we need your permission to go.
Make the motion that we approve this travel.
Motion second, all in favor of that? Can you oppose? Okay, we'll pass that on to the full council for approval. That concludes the finance committee agenda.
Okay. Airport.
We don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Public Works?
Nothing, Mayor.
Utilities? Public Safety?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one item under our public safety. Chief Glass?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, Mayor and Council. What I'm requesting is to, do the fleet upgrade in the same amount we've done with the fire truck, using GMA financing or lease? Replace 15 high mileage and less fuel-efficient vehicles. Doing this, and my money that we'll spend, there'll be no splash fund spent this year. The first payment would be in next year, because just like with the fire truck, I got to get the sack numbers and all that together and get that approved, but this allows us to go in and get those older vehicles, it's 90-some up to 137, 138,000 miles on our fleet. Which that also helps with some things like higher costs, the fuel cost, we'll see a difference in, because based on our experience in the Michigan State Police vehicle test that they do every year, we still think the V6 Dodge is the way to go, plus the price point, it's running about $2,000 per unit less than a four-wheeler Chevrolet set at the same weight. Just parts and tire costs and fuel costs, I think this will be the best way for us to go, and it'll still leave not quite half, but almost half of the projected balance for fleet upgrades and splash, and we'd be at a three-year period doing this. So we still have, what, three years, three years left if we saw any more come in.
Anybody have any questions, discussion?
Now, how many, just for my own benefit, how many total vehicles, chief, do we have in the fleet?
Right now, we have forty-three, and one, two, three, four, five, six are vehicles that's got, we use them for spares, so to speak. They have anywhere from one hundred and thirty-seven to one hundred and fifteen thousand miles on them. They would need to be surplus to. Anything, anything we're gonna be taking out will be high-maintenance, high-fuel consumption stuff. We actually are running about thirty-seven vehicles, and four or five of those are seized
We just had normally replaced this many at one time, haven't we?
No, that's, no, sir, that's kind of where you're at now with ten patrol units that's got nine to one hundred and thirty-seven thousand miles on it. The reason for doing it is, is to take that old stuff out of the, out, the stuff that's getting, a Crown Big, that's one that's got a hundred thousand miles on it, it's probably getting about eleven miles to a gallon of gas, eleven, twelve.
So I guess your proposal is, doing it this way, under this splash cycle, and not having a payment until next year?
Yes.
The fund should be accumulated by the.
And the amount that, the amount that the payments would be is, is in line, is actually would be less splash dollars spent for the same period of time as was budgeted over the five years.
We'd appropriated approximately $800,000, and I think what he's saying is, by buying them in bulk like this, I think we're saving about $350,000 of. The life of the splash, and therefore, we're getting a, getting a cheaper unit price by doing it this way.
Are you adding to the fleet, or surplus in one for everyone?
We'll, we'll be replacing vehicles. I'm not, not growing, not growing the fleet, we're not gonna have, no, sir, we won't have the, we're not gonna add fifteen to it, no, when we get through, we'll still, we'll keep What is the butter for, surplus, not surplus, but the backup cars when we have something for maintenance or whatever, probably keep about three of those.
Now, this is not just a straight lease, this is a lease purchase?
It would be the same, it's in there, but it'd be the same as we're doing with the firetruck here, at the end of this, is our, our stuff.
Any more discussion? Like to entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we recommend the council that we go ahead and fund this request.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Bring it before the council next week. That's all we have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We had our DDA annual retreat in June with our board, and kind of pinpointed some of the things within the next 12 months that we really want to focus on, and one is improving the business district in downtown, want to do that through wayfinding and signage and just coming alongside the current businesses with more support. One of the ways we want to do that is the facade grant program funded by DDA. We, that comes before our board this Thursday, we already have a draft in the hands of our board members, and that'll be used to match fines of private business owners when they want to improve the facade in keeping with historical preservation standards, to just improve the look of downtown. So that's one way we want to do that. Also, want to be open to public-private partnerships for continuing developments on the broader sides, the back sides of downtown. There's a couple of private individuals, investors, that are talking through that process, and we, as DDA board, just want to come alongside and support that and help that along. Maybe we can get some projects started within the next year or so in that area, and the last priority for the DDA board is looking at Old City Hall and kind of coming up with new ideas of ways to use that space and help it to cash flow for the city, now that we have a lot more open business space there. This Saturday with DDA is the Taste of the Market event in conjunction with the farmer's market. We have restaurants coming from Athens, from Grayson, and from within Monroe, and they're gonna be preparing tasting portions using local vendors, locally grown produce from our market. The tickets are three for five dollars. Or you can get twenty for fifteen. We've been promoting this, you can get tickets in businesses downtown, Side Street, Buckles, the UGA Extension Office, and we're partnering with Athens Tech Culinary School to do this, and it's gonna help fund a scholarship program for them, as well as generate some more funds for our market, so we're excited about that. Also, we, the DDA was awarded a project, a grant from Walton, the Walton Healthcare Foundation and the Walton Foundation for the Project Road Share, to develop a trailhead kiosk for those bicycling routes connecting Good Hope and Social Circle. The grant was in the amount of $10,000, just over $10,000, so that's good news for downtown, and we're gonna hopefully put that kiosk right behind Old City Hall in the corner of that lot. It's just a place where cyclists can come to town, feel welcome, and see maps of where they can bike, they can park their cars there, and then they can ride and regroup. Hopefully, it'll generate more tourism and business for downtown. And also, the Bed and Breakfast Project that I've talked to many of you about, they closed on the property last Friday, and in conjunction with that project, they're gonna be awarded $215,000 in federal funds through the State Small Business Credit Initiative, and $62,000 in a downtown development revolving loan fund. So that's almost $300,000 that's going into developing Monroe from outside sources that the city doesn't have to match, but we just have come alongside and support, so that's really exciting news, and that's the most recent developments from DDA. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about that.
How's the pocket park coming?
It's coming, it's coming, it's just coming along slowly. We have the back post poured, and they're, they're set for the fence. Patrick Camo from Carter Watkins is kind of volunteering his time to project manage that for us. He sent me some updated plans just today of what we can do this Saturday with the juvenile, Walton County Juvenile Court kids are helping build the park, and we're also using volunteer labor from the community. So we've made a lot of progress, but it's been mostly demolition thus far.
If people want to see progress on the pocket park, it's on Saturday mornings, they're walking down. Early toward the farmer's market, it's easy to walk in and see that, right?
That's right. You can go, you have to go in the back side. Until we build the back fence, we're gonna keep the front closed off, just for safety purposes.
And now that you've been here for a few months, what are the most consistent voices that you hear over and over from, from business owners?
Positive and negative?
I mean, just people who have ideas and dreams and visions, like what do you hear over and over and over?
Well, one of the main concerns of downtown business owners is parking, and a lot of its perception, but as a city, we can start looking at some options of how we can make our parking more visible, more accessible, so that we can get more people downtown. But one of the real strengths of our downtown is how beautiful it is, and a lot of the things that we just have naturally, other communities are trying to recreate or build with they don't have it. The other thing is our, the feel, the friendliness of this community, that's a real strength, the collaborative nature of the businesses and the city with the businesses, it's a
Okay. Items of discussion coming up for next week, there'll be a zoning variance at 202 South Jackson Street.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Just to shed a little light on that, they're looking to put a portico on the front of their 4,500-square-foot new sanctuary building that they're gonna build, and it's gonna, if it's allowed, it'll encroach on the right-of-way. It won't extend to the right-of-way, and it won't get in the right-of-way, but it's basically to cover their semicircular driveway that goes up to the front door for dropping off of, you know, handicapped people, elderly people, or other people that can't make the walk from their adjacent parking areas. So they'll be looking for a variance on the setback to install the portico, and I just wanted to mention on that, that all of the building that they're planning, the 4,500-square-feet, is behind the building setback line, it's just the portico that's gonna extend over the line. And one other thing I wanted to mention is, almost every building down through there, actually, probably every building on that road encroaches on the setback line, so it basically give them equal footing with the rest of the community there, so just wanted to throw that in there for your consideration.
Okay. We have the personal care home deadline extension.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. That's also another one we're working on, it's 841 Overlook Trail in Evergreen subdivision. This is the couple that came before you that were unaware that they weren't allowed to have it there, and we've, we've given them an opportunity to find another place to locate their business. They have found a place, it's the old, let me make sure I get this right, the Emmanuel Praise Church Building at 1557 South Broad Street, and they're wanting to make that into a personal care home and remove it from the neighborhood that they live in currently, and that's pretty much the, that in a nutshell. They're just, they're wanting an extension because their negotiations have just begun, and they're not gonna be able to meet the deadline, but they are moving forward with finding a new location.
Do they have anything in writing? I mean, do they have a contract yet on that?
Not that I've seen, not yet, and they're gonna be here at the next meeting, I guess, to speak to this, and if they have anything at that time, contract or binding agreement or anything like that, they'll, they'll present that at that time.
How long have they had? Six months?
A year.
There's an application for beer and wine sales at the Matt Food Mart, and another application for beer and wine at the Hot Spot, appointment for the planning permission. Do you have that?
That's to fill the, sorry, term, I believe, is it? Yeah, Mr. Sauls. So, okay, you have those names to present next week.
Okay.
Thing of political activity ordinance. That can be read tonight.
That is, we do not have it to be read tonight, we can discuss it if we need to discuss it this evening.
Okay.
I will, I guess, discuss. I asked this to put on the agenda, it was a year ago tonight, or two years ago tonight, The council did approve the ordinance that, on political activity, that got the whole thing in front of it, basically prohibited anyone serving in a appointed position, I mean, to the city boards or other things, from publicly endorsing any candidate for city election office. At that time, when it was first before I was serving on the DDA, and I did resign from Following this to run for office. I have asked that this ordinance be repealed, because I thought it was wrong at the time, I still think it's wrong. I think that people that we have serving on. we have serving on, you know, things such as the planning commission, HBC, DDA, uh, lobby board, uh, et cetera, uh, these are the people of the community that are actively involved with the community. They volunteer their time and resources. They know the issues of the community. And therefore, I feel they're very qualified to support candidates for elected office, uh, and should do that. That's one. And I guess the second thing is that I'm very conscious that anytime we as a council adopt an ordinance, uh, whether it's this type of political activity ordinance, or zoning ordinance, or other types of ordinance, there's some, what we're doing in some, in some way, maybe limiting, uh, pub, personal, or property... ...rights of, of individuals. I think we have to be very conscious of, of that, that we don't infringe on people's rights more than necessary, and I think in this case it is an infringement on the, you know, uh, person's mental rights, if you will, on people to, to speak their opinions and endorse public, uh, public officials. So therefore, I'm asking that this be read. I, I thought that's what it was, was the first reading, but that this be read, and then... Um, after the second reading, I guess we would vote on whether or not to adopt it. That's, that's the reason I asked that it be on. I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned that we are limiting people's rights, and these are the people that, again, that are some of the more active citizens of the community and more knowledgeable citizens, and certainly should have the right to endorse any candidate they see fit.
Any more comments?
I was just curious about, uh, aren't two of these boards, aren't they paid a stipend? Or not? Planning?
Planning, yes.
And Housing Authority?
The Housing Authority's...
You know, they, they don't get anything from us, but they may from the...
I'm just curious. Any more comments? Uh, our items requiring action tonight, approval of the Convention and Visitors Bureau memorandum of understanding.
May I turn that over to Ms. Crawley to, uh, explain the CBB MOU?
Yes, this is for another grant application. We had opportunity to apply for a tourism product development grant. Um, it needed to, the application needed to be submitted on behalf of the city... ...because the DDA can only submit one application, and we already had one that we were working on to submit. It was an opportunity to get thirty thousand rather than fifteen thousand dollars invested in our community by doing one through the city as well as through the DDA. And so the Convention and Visitors Bureau had already voted in their board meeting to support the application. I think you have it attached. It's for the potential of a Monroe Cultural and Heritage Museum. The, winning the awarded grant fines would be, that's depend... ...on the plan moving forward as stated in the application. But that's the, the basic understanding of the, of why we needed that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the grant or the memorandum.
Oh, there's, there's... For your benefit, we would do this, uh, did you know, uh, our good administration was out, uh, and we have time since the deadline on this. So memorandum of understanding did not, does not commit the city to any use of funds. It's an opportunity for us to simply double, if you... ...we'll double down on this grant money. Uh, so we're asking for the council's blessing on this memorandum of understanding to support the application that, that the CBB has already submitted.
The only thing about this that, that I read it, and what concerns me, is that by accepting and applying and understanding the application, are we locking in the use of Old City Hall as the site for this? Because it refers to, in the memorandum, that... The funds will be used directly in that location.
Yes. If we, we are not locked into any agreement with the group coming together for the museum, the CBB hasn't made any official agreement. If we're awarded the grant funds, that will be the next step, see what kind of agreement we want to do about the use of that site. Um, in the grant language, as we often said, proposed site, if the funds are awarded, that's what they would go to, is to develop a plan to use that as the site. Um, but if the funds aren't awarded, then we're kind of back to the drawing board about where they would want to do it.
And I think I'm correct, thinking that if the funds are awarded, the group would do a study on how the Old City Hall could be used. That'd be part of the grant.
Yes.
Of being based upon that, come back and ask for a formal agreement to use the City Hall, which at that time could either be accepted or...
Well, I mean, a lot of the attachments, uh, it... ...it up here, as to the overview of the project, uh, the Monocultural and Heritage Museum will occupy the main floor of the City of Monroe Old City Hall Building in downtown Monroe at 227 South Broad Street. It looks like that somebody's already made that decision. I mean...
Yeah.
That kind of bothers me because the project is great. I mean, I think that it's just really something that ought to be done. Uh, I just don't know if... Somebody's realizing all the costs that the City of Monroe is having to put into keeping that building there right now. I did a little estimate on that, and it's costing us about a hundred thousand dollars a year just to have that building, and if there's no rental potential, and there wouldn't be if we use it for something else, then that's what concerns me about the whole thing, as I just don't know if we can afford it.
That's a, that's a valid concern, and that's actually what the... Plans that I'm looking at, as well as the CBB, is could we use a portion of the main floor? Can we still rent out the available space? How do we actually make this building not only the expenses of just maintaining it, but also the debt service that the city has on it? And those would be all the things that we would be, when we come to the agreement stage, we'd have to go, we'd have to iron out and figure out with the group that wants to do the museum. They see themselves as a fundraising, generating community support, and just... ...general acceptance, but also in raising the funds to do it. And so we would need all that, to, all of that would be on the table, to need to be met financially if we're gonna move forward with that site. I agree. I appreciate that concern.
But by accepting the grant, we're not locking that building into this...
No, we're accepting the grant money for the first phase of potentially developing that site.
Any more discussion on this? Okay, if not, we'll entertain a motion on this memorandum of understanding. I'll make that motion with approval. Have a motion by Mr. Bradley.
Someone done want to second it, yeah, I'd really like to know why they would not. I haven't heard any objection.
Second.
I have a second, Bob. Mr. Purvis, any more discussion? None? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. With no other business, we need a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
Mr. Scott?
Sure.
Taken by Mr. Richardson, all in favor? I mean, adjourn.